Can I let's all the conference room committee need to order?
And I'm calling the regional school committee to order, note that we're being recorded. And first item on the agenda is public comments. Have we got them there? No public comments, okay. So we're gonna go right into recognitions and the first group will be Kicks for Cancer.
Where's the Houston?
Anywhere is fine, of course. Turn the mic on.
Turn the mic on, Mike.
The button underneath.
Oh, on the bottom, the yellow one.
Just like we practiced, right? Hello, everybody. I'm Mike Maschula. I'm the principal of the high school. Really happy to be here and gonna talk a little bit about Kicks for Cancer. And I'll just say a few opening words before I turn it over to the kids. But you know, each school year kind of has its own rhythm to it. There's a lot of events that go on at the high school, both large and small. But there's a few signature events that we have each year and one of those is Kicks for Cancer. And you know, what's really remarkable about the event is it's a total community effort with hundreds and hundreds of volunteers that are helping with the dance or commanding the ticket booths or just helping, we had the Mighty Moose, which you're gonna hear a little bit about this year. And so there's just hundreds of volunteers from across the community that participate. And it's just this wonderful event that brings together the entire community for a really great cause. I'll let them talk a little bit about the amount of money that was raised this year. It is pretty staggering. And this year, it's going to a very specific doctor in research that I... The doctor said this will literally save lives, so it's... Well, there'll be more information reported on that in the near future. But I am now gonna turn it over to our students who participated and they're gonna talk a little about their experience with Kicks for Cancer. Come on up, guys.
So to start the day off...
Do you guys do you mind introducing yourselves?
Oh, yeah.
As you doctor, when you literally, what's comfortable?
I'm Abby, Massaging.
I'm Hoover, I'm a soccer team.
I'm Catherine, I'm also a soccer team.
Talia, I'm also a soccer team.
Cal Jackson, soccer team.
Will Patterson, soccer team.
I'm Cameron, I'm also a soccer team as well.
I'm a field hockey team. And to start the day off, we had our Sticks for Cancer event, which basically we play for someone that has been affected by cancer and we wear their name on the back of our shirt. And we had our event and it was especially special this year because someone on our team lost their mom recently to cancer. So we were playing especially like for her and her honor. And we won our game, which was good.
This year, the girls' team specifically recognized Ash Baird, who was a girl that played for Weston. And I think in 2017, she was diagnosed with cancer. Recently, this past grade, she lost her battle, passed away, which is super upsetting, but I think... Going, our sophomore year, going into the game where we played against Weston, Ash was the girl that our team talked about going into the game. She was their star player and she was unbelievably good. I think she had a full ride to Georgetown set out for her. So it's super important that she was... Super important that she lost her battle, which I think is why it was so good that we were able to honor her this year.
Like Mr. Maschula touched upon, Kicks for Cancer has been like a staple in Concord for like over a decade now. And behind just, you know, the games that go on, there's so much planning. And obviously, I'm playing, but you can see everything that goes on in the background, which is amazing. And also, before Kicks for Cancer, or before the night of practice, before we go around the team and everybody's wearing someone on their back, and it's really amazing just to see how many people and how many people's lives are affected by cancer. You see like mom or grandma or grandpa. So it's awesome that we can work towards a cause like that. And what Mr. Maschula touched upon earlier about the amount of money that we raise is we know exactly what it's going to. It's actually producing that technology, I think that it can detect it earlier.
If you have more details, yeah, please.
I think that what would've helped detect the ovarian cancer earlier is some sort of patch that it's a different type of color if it's worsening. So with Ms. Swain's condition, she didn't know it was getting worse. She thought she was in remission, but it kind of snuck back up on her. But the patch that we raised money towards... Yeah, this year would produce more patches and get... I think it would get patented by the FDA, so that's pretty awesome.
Yeah, so in like the previous years, we would send all the money to the Dana Farber Foundation. And this year, like Mr. Maschula said, it was going to this... A specific doctor who basically said, oh, if you can raise like $50,000, like we can get like X amount of many patches or like hire this many like daughter specialists to, you know, run like research in the lab. So the actual amount that we raised was $115,000 approximately. And so when... So when we went, you know, we went to the doctor and said, hey, like, what would like $115,000 do for us? And he was like, he was blown away. And he was just like, like this will like push like to get the patch like approved by FDA and everything. And so I just think it's like much better to know where, you know, it's a specific thing. Like we know this is where, this is what we're playing for. This is what like all the organization goes to. It's better than like just like, oh, this money's just going into Dana Farber Foundation. So yeah.
So specifically, this year at halftime, we did a ceremony for Ash and for the Weston team. So we went out to middle of the field with the Bedford, Lincoln, Sudbury, and active box throw teams. And basically, we formed a square in the middle of the field. And we opened it up and the Weston team came into the middle. And we gave all the players one of the Kicks for Cancer shirts. And then they ran around the outside of the square and basically high-fived people from all of the teams. And then we all lined up in the middle, which was just a really powerful ceremony. And they gave a speech for Ash, which was also really powerful.
And then in addition to the ceremony at Kicks for Cancer, when every DCL team played Weston, we all wore black bands around our legs or arms to like commemorate her. But just in general, Kicks for Cancer, I think, I mean, I've been a part of it for all four years of my high school and it's definitely like my favorite event of the year. I just think it's so cool because we're all like competing, wanna win, wanna be that less. But like everyone just comes together to fight against cancer. And it just, I think that halftime like ceremony just showed how like, even though we're in the middle of the game, we all like want to support the Weston team. Yeah.
So we had four teams this year, it's a state free program or the event. And I feel like it's a really, you know, good bonder to bring together all the kids from different high schools and different, you know, social backgrounds and what's in the school. I know the day before, the whole school goes pink. And you get to see, you know, freshmen, sophomores, juniors, seniors, all you know, kind of rallying together, even if, you know, you're not friends with someone. You see that they're wearing pink and you're gonna actually relate to them. But I mean, even in other schools, I mean, example being Lincoln Sudbury. I feel like the team, they've gotten a lot closer because of the event. I look to a lot of their players, you know, as friends. You know, mostly from this event, because it's so, you know, bringing it together. And I feel like for the kids, you know, it's a really good, it's a good thing.
And we had a couple of young ladies just want hints. Would you mind just introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about your experience?
Absolutely. I'm Grace Wong, I'm field hockey captain and I have the pleasure of my Sticks for Cancer.
I'm also a field hockey captain and I'm Jordan. I'm about to play the Sticks for Cancer league, which is a very nice, you know, a nice addition to the whole Kicks program.
And this year, we added the Mighty Moose. So I think at this time, we'll bring up folks here, talk about the Mighty Moose.
And can I just transition it and say thank you to all of you? I'm glad you were standing there blocking the cameras for us so that I wasn't in front of the camera showing all the series. And as I say, Mighty Moose, I will say, I'm a close friend of Jenna. The fact that you raised so much money towards something that is... That is going right to her team of doctors just means so much. So thank you all so much. It's just an amazing event.
Amazing, you guys. Thank you.
I'm really mighty and join my Mighty Moose team. Join them and become part of this organizing team. So I'll come over here, but I'm gonna introduce Amy DeBajon, who was our fearless leader in organizing all of this. And Trish Seifer, who jumped in with so many things and Siobhan Rowe. We all just jumped in a lot, so, and Siobhan Rowe. And I'll let Amy talk about what we did.
Yeah, so thank you for inviting us tonight, all of the high schoolers who came. You guys were so articulate and sincere. It was really nice listening to you. And we are very honored to be a part of Kicks for Cancer as a new event with the Mighty Moose 5K fun run in honor of Jenna Swain, who was a dear friend of mine as well. I knew Jenna for 20 years. And her death on July 3rd really hit home and touched all of us in a way that just was... It's still, it's still hard for me to even articulate how devastating it was. But, you know, Derek approached me towards the end, her husband Derek approached me towards the mid to end of July and said, hey, Jenna really wanted to do this 5K. Do you think we could pull it off for Kicks for Cancer this year? And we formed this committee of 19 and we just, you know, sometimes they say, it's, you know, it's not a sprint, it's a marathon. This was a sprint. But we wanted to pull it off with Jenna and the Swain children, Luke and Jason and Nora and for Derek as well. And we ended up, we kind of went in with no expectation. We really weren't sure, you know, what we could get done and, you know, how it was gonna play out. But in the end, we had over 1,200 people registered for both a combination of the kids' one mile event and the 5K. And we raised approximately $45,000, which is part of that $115,000 overall that's going to Dr. Melo, that's Jenna's doctor. So it was an honor to be a part of it. And honestly, we had the support of the school system, Mike and Heather, I don't know. Laurie, thank you so much. The police department, the town rec department, the town health department, you name it. Everybody was pushing for us to pull this off and helping us get it together. And it was, in the end, fantastic. We had over 200 volunteers and almost 100 of them were from CCHS students. We were sponsored by the field hockey, excuse me, the track and cross country teams. We also had the soccer and the field hockey teams helping as well. So it was truly a community event and that's what Jenna wanted. And Jenna had started to plan this back in 2016. So we essentially had her playbook, so, and we followed it to a T. And so everything that we did was Jenna's plan, as close as we could get it. And we'll continue to do that in the years following. So thank you for everybody's support to the community. And it was not just one person, it was a whole, whole community event that helped pull it off and be so successful in our first year. We look forward to year two.
So I read a little bit about your group and I'm curious. I think the rest of the audience would like to know probably how where the Moose word came into the dialogue.
Oh, yeah, that's funny. So Jenna is from, she's from Alaska, born and raised and very proud of her Alaska heritage. And so she did not want the event named after her. She's very humble and did not want that type of attention. So we had like a branding committee, it was part of our overall committee. And they just, you know, they talked to the Swain children and said, okay, what do you guys think? And so they wanted to tie it somehow into Alaska. And the Mighty Moose is a combination of Jenna's favorite pizza place in Anchorage, called the Moose's Tooth. And her, a mountain range that she very much loved and I think hyped, also called the Moose's Tooth. And the children ultimately picked the name. They gave up some choices and that's the one that they wanted.
Yeah, the initials and the, you know, talk about the JHS.
Go ahead, Heather, you can go ahead.
So JHS are Jenna's initials. But again, because she wouldn't have wanted her name and initials all over, we took those initials and they naturally tied right into three core parts of Jenna's personality, which were joy, heart, strength. So on all of these, JHS also stand for joy, heart, strength. And Jenna's strength was really a theme of all of this, which is why it became the Mighty Moose also. She was an incredible person and...
Who we all love.
And fought, yes, fought mightily.
Extremely courageous, yeah.
Towards the end, yep. And I'd say too, I know that the 1,200 registrations number is amazing. And I told this crew, last time we were all together, her stretch goal was 500. And that was, that was even, you know, she had in her notes, hopefully by year three, we can have 500 people. So every time we passed another round, we would all celebrate and we were just in awe.
And then we got a little nervous.
Especially the person dealing with a lot of logistics, oh my god, there are gonna be 1,200 people going.
I think our financial goal was 2,000. Yeah, we thought if we could raise 3,000. We ended up raising 1,900. So we had some extremely generous sponsors who really stepped it up. And not one person, overall, between raising money or helping out in any capacity, told us, no, everybody was on board and we had wanted to be part of it, which was, which was Jenna's goal. So it was great. We were happy we were able to pull off what Jenna had envisioned, as close as we could. And I think Mighty Moose brought in another part of the community. We reached out to the cross country teams, which, you know, Saturday's soccer and Sticks for Cancer, field hockey. But Sunday, we got the cross country runners to like line the course. It just brought in more of the teens at the high school, which was really exciting. And just people who like to run. Some people came into the whole weekend. I think Kicks for Cancer seems to be evolving into an entire weekend. We do the pink dance, we do the football game Friday night and all the kids come to the pink dance, which raised $4,800 this year. And Saturday, there's soccer games all day from like 10:00 AM until almost 10:00 at night. And the Mighty Moose was at night, the kids' run was at 8:30 AM on Sunday and then 9:00 AM for the 5K. And it was just this fantastic weekend that kids have analogized it for the point of it. It's like our homecoming in Concord. We don't have homecoming, it's like, kids come home for college and kids play soccer under the lights. And you know, even when you go to college, you could play soccer and there's thousands of people watching you. I mean, grandparents fly in, like Kids for Cancer in Concord is such a beautiful thing and it's just getting bigger and better. And we've gotten tons of compliments from other towns. I'm currently distributing raffle prizes from Kicks for Cancer. And every person I call, they bought a raffle ticket at a soccer shop in Woburn and they forgot what, and then they hear about the event and, hey, Oliver, that's an amazing event. Or there was a dad that we know through a club soccer team from Bedford. He came up to the raffle table and he bought, it had to be $20 bills by my raffle. He said, my wife was just re-diagnosed with ovarian, I'm so happy. And he won a raffle prize, so I was wanting to call him and get him his prize this week. But people, Concord looks so wonderful in this light. The other towns are just so thankful for the opportunity to come. And then they share their stories of their community members who are fighting cancer. Because on the back of their shirts, every town, they put whatever name they want. It's a huge coordination effort with Ray Public and the committee. So we should be very proud if you can Concord have kids and now have Mighty Moose and the pink dance. It's just, this is an amazing Concord weekend.
And I'll draw two last quick things. One is that in terms of goals, we had the financial goal and the registration goal. And I will mention the other one that Jenna had talked about, which was her goal, that this was a community event and a community feel. And I will say again, thanks to all of the people who were involved, administration students, everyone. I, we had people coming up and saying to us, you know, I've done lots of 5Ks before, but I've never experienced one like this. It was such a community feel and such a great family-friendly environment. I mean, it was amazing, the sense of community support and camaraderie at this event. But, you know, which lasted throughout, it's all the way through Saturday and then, and that really carried through Sunday as well. So that was nice to really address for goal in that also.
And the Swain kids are third, sixth, and eighth grade. And Willard had a huge crew of teachers that got them.
Oh, Willard showed up.
The support they're getting in the entire town and in the school system, I think is so well-received and so grateful. So thank you to everyone. We are very lucky to be a part of Kicks for Cancer. We're very grateful for everybody's support. And like we said, we're looking forward to next year, doing it better and bigger and however, you know, continue to follow Jenna's dreams.
Thank you very much. Thanks, guys.
Applause for both groups obviously. And we wanna make sure that, you know, we can do it for next year and put in for good weather.
Jenna took care of that this year.
Mr. Grumman, do you mind if I just say one more thing?
Oh, sorry.
Two quick things. Well, one, what was exciting for me with the race is there was 1,200 runners and I won the event. They didn't talk about it. But Mary Sue Newsom, I don't know if I'm pronouncing her last name correctly, but she's the chairperson for Kicks for Cancer. And I just wanted to read a very quick quote from her. She had this to say, "I'm sending out this simple, deeply heartfelt thank you to all the volunteers, teams, and supporters of Kicks for Cancer. This is the 12th annual Kicks for Cancer. It was an amazing weekend, fantastic weather, incredible sporting events, joyous celebrations of life, and awe-inspiring tributes to those who we love who battle cancer. It was an extraordinary community event." So just wanted to thank her for her efforts. And as they noted, there was two great articles in the Globe. The event was honoring Ash Baird from Weston as the athletes recognized and Jenna Swain. So thank you.
Thank you all. Thanks so much.
We could know this was not Mary Sue's first year either. And that's one of the cool things about the event, people come back and come back and come back. Thank you so much for coming. Appreciate it. Item on the agenda is the chance to review our reports. Okay, I went to the last FinCon meeting and part of the agenda was a presentation by the Minutemen High School. They were recently named a national blue ribbon school, which only went to three high schools in Massachusetts. And it's a great honor for them, so they were very excited about that. And it's interesting to note that the building project is on scale, on time, and within budget. And so they're very pleased with that. This is a big, I guess, $140 million project, so it's a really big situation. And the other thing that I found interesting is that Concord's involvement at that school is back to almost record levels. You know, it was 27 and 26 in the mid 2000s, 2006 and 2008, and then dropped to 7 in 2013, 2013, and now back up to 24. So we're participating in all the programs they have there. So that was very interesting. Also, I wanna just mention town meeting because we had a successful showing there. Article 9 passed with the help of our own superintendent and the chief of police. And both of them, you know, gave some great answers while he made a comment, which helped. And so we're very pleased about that, I think. And also, there was a round of applause when the announcement was made that the two articles wouldn't be moved, so that we're gonna finance those otherwise. So, and then we have, the next item is very important. We, I'm very pleased and it gives me great pleasure to announce that the school committee would like to formally and publicly recognize Dr. Lori Hunter for her successful and appreciated performance of the duties of the superintendent of the Concord-Carla High School and the Concord Public School. Lori's entry plan was very successful and her continual inclusive engagement is benefiting students, teachers, staff, and the school committee at large. And to do this formally and appropriately, we wrote a letter.
So we have a letter that we would, this is probably a little delayed because it takes time to coordinate this group officially and legally. But we wanted to recognize a special year, and so this is a letter from both committees. The Concord School Committee and the Concord-Carla Regional School Committee would like to extend its profound gratitude to Dr. Lori Hunter for the work she did in the first year as the superintendent of our school. We would like to acknowledge the unusual circumstances with which she was presented in her inaugural year and the incredible grace and calm with which she approached each of them. Ordinarily, the superintendent enjoys great support in her first year from a team of administrators. And for several reasons, there were periods of time when Lori found herself single-handedly at the helm. During these times, she maintained stability throughout our schools and set a terrific example for her staff. She shepherded us through sensitive school calendar issues as well as provided us with new comprehensive cultural proficiency education. She organized and led a strategic plan for both school districts with over 50 stakeholders. She was resourceful and creative in her approach to budgeting and came up with ideas like the early retirement incentive that we implemented this past year to save funds for the schools. And overall, she managed to, literally in one case, put out unexpected fires. In doing so, she provided transparency and built trust throughout the school districts. So we would like to underscore our appreciation for the sincere and committed and dedicated work she produced despite the challenges she was presented. We felt it was important to acknowledge this publicly and thank her for giving beyond what we and we know she expected last school year. Again, we are very grateful and we believe this underscores Lori's solid character and very strong leadership. And we look forward to working with Lori for years to come. Respectfully, your school committees.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't know that was possible.
Despite our protocol to avoid surprises, it's a surprise.
Thank you very much. That means a lot. All of that's true, so I appreciate the recognition. And as much as it was lonely at times, it still is the effort of really the entire district running from the teachers and folks out in the schools right on up through. So there was never a time that no one was there, definitely. It just meant I had to stretch farther, so thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
My pleasure, really. My pleasure.
Given there was no correspondence, we'll go into... Oh, the superintendent's report, yes.
I don't know, I don't know what to say now. I will provide highlights of what's in my report. It really does reflect the goals I'm gonna be talking on later. So it gives you some idea of where we are in each goal as we get the year started. We have begun the response to intervention and special education work that's outlined. And I guess the really exciting part, this is, Jared loves the numbers. I love when I can sync everything together and say, everything here syncs to the strategic plan. So I will not belabor that message, but everything here does. So our work with response to intervention is off and running. We're running screeners for the first time with the freshman class at the high school. And already are finding some popping data that's telling us new information of what kids need from us and beginning to make those plans. The elementary and middle school are gathering their data and also identifying interventions. We are looking at social emotional screeners also at the middle and high schools. So that'll be the first time we have more quantitative data to work off of in terms of identifying students in need. And that's a really exciting next step. The tools alone have been thin up until now. So we're really fortunate to be working with a tool that was developed at Harvard and is now available to us. And we're in their really early implementation phase, so we're excited by that. In terms of special education, we're reviewing the K-8 report. We spent time on that at the administrative team. And the highlights have been shared back at the elementary schools and on the way to the middle school. And now we'll be starting to talk on what the next steps are to reflect on those pieces of feedback. Educator evaluation, all of our goals are due, as I will provide to you tonight this month. So we're working with the teachers. I think again, what's really exciting is that much of the goals across the improvement plans, which you'll hear next time we meet, all the way to the evaluated goals, are starting to sync up with the strategic plan and the initiatives that we're working on, which really puts us all on the same boat in the same direction, which is really exciting. We're looking again at our work with Challenge Success. The middle school has attended a conference in September to really reinvigorate their work. They've been doing a more piecemeal approach to challenge success and hadn't really gone into the deep end of the pool. And that's what they did in September. And there's a team in place that Mr. Cameron will be leading and really reflecting on what the messages from Challenge Success mean to the middle school. The high school's taking on homework as a major part of their discussion. You'll hear that from Mike when he brings you the improvement plan. So a lot more work to come, but again, we're all taking that as a priority and looking at how we can better support our kids as holistic young people. School safety, this one is in my goals and I think has really blossomed to the top as a priority that is in the strategic plan, but wasn't really identified as a district-wide initiative to become the top priority this year. But I'm gonna bump it up and make it one of my top priorities, much because as we've explored this further and started to delve into where we're at, we have plans to update, we have a second school resource officer to introduce. officer to introduce, and police are talking very collaboratively with us about some different technology that is available to us. There's a lot right on the radar here that makes good sense that I would stay focused on that, take the committee that I started last spring and just keep all of the momentum moving, which is certainly in this time and age when schools have to prioritize safety so thoroughly. I'm going to leave all the budget discussion to Jared later tonight, but we are spending a lot of time on the budget, so. In terms of engagement and innovation and integration, which are really primarily instructional pieces of the strategic plan, my goals this year will be really trying to step back and take the year to plan what the plan is going to be, for lack of a better way to describe it, starting with the leadership team and getting us all on the same page as to what the vision is for integration and engagement and what those tools and strategies can look like. Technology is a part of that, so much of that work will happen at the administrative level. We spent our retreat in August looking at design thinking, which has a different way of approaching the leadership strategy. This morning, we looked at a couple of different pieces. It's just messier, and people are thrown to figure things out more for themselves. It's not so directed, and there's a lot of great in that, there's a lot of discomfort in that too, and we have to grow comfortable with the discomforts because we're going to throw control back more to the kids and to the staff while we stay synced up with each other. So lots of things rest to talk about, as you can hear. Cultural proficiency, we have just had really ongoing conversations. We had a discussion here this morning with the leadership team. I was at ALPO this afternoon where our new MEPCO director, Andrew Ricci, was presenting, and the ongoing dialogue is absolutely going to bring us to where we need to go. So this year is all about professional development and helping us understand what it is we're trying to accomplish, and I think in the same time, continuing to get feedback from the community. I'm still receiving, you know, feedback from folks on religious holidays, and it's all set with the right, we know you're trying, but here's a little bit that might have happened for us. In this case, it wasn't even these holidays, it was other experiences, not the month of September. So I think there's a dialogue that's opened up with parents and kids, and that's just as important to the process as us learning what proficiency means, so. And then finally, community and collaboration. I did meet with the chair of the Carla Board of Selectmen last week and follow up to the special town meeting that wasn't. We had some good dialogue and going forward in our efforts to collaborate and connect together. I met with CPAC along with Jessica Murphy, our Special Education Director, last week at their opening meeting, and we had a great crowd and a lot of really good dialogue there. They're very encouraged with the new programs and the reviews and the momentum that's growing in terms of special ed. And I am ready to kick out your school committee email list this week. We've got all the pieces in place. We've got a little, Heather wrote a little kickoff message that we'll send out, and then we'll recruit people from there, so that's easy for us to get that up and running and make it live and act. Yeah, thank you. Morning Condo, do you hear my goals?
Lori, can I put a question your way? About the screening applications, they're somewhat new.
Yes.
Are we feeding information back to Harvard or other providers so that we're part of their quality?
We are, and he can speak to that more thoroughly than I can.
So, I don't know if this is working, but information is shared back, and so it becomes part of the national, whether it's, we also have Star Renaissance, which is the math and English and then social-emotional, I think that's in part of the screening program, but it's shared back without name. Then it's part of, you know, when you're looking at benchmarks, national, and it's based off that, all that data.
So given no correspondence, why, I didn't see any.
No, it's all like...
So now we can go and have Mr. Our Principal, Mike Muscolo, present the handbook updates for the coming year.
So, whoa. We know it wasn't working last time. So before I get into the very exciting student handbook, I would like to just echo some of the sentiments shared by Dr. Hunter. She's been a great supporter for me and for the school, so she is very level-headed, which is in a job that can be quite intense at times. The level-headedness is helpful, and sometimes she can tell me to be patient. And, you know, anytime that I am kind of a little concerned about how things are going at work, I can always look and talk to Hunter and think, she has it much worse. So we're going to talk a little handbook, and I'll be brief here because I know it's not the most engaging or exciting talk, but we did have some additions to the handbook and just the new religious and cultural holiday policy. Our Alice training wasn't in there, acceptable use policy. Also, ASPEN is our student management system, and we do have a requirement that grades are updated every two weeks for families and for support staff within the school to support students. We do have a homework policy and coordinating assessment days, which is just trying to alleviate having four or five tests on the same day. So around certain times throughout the year, we'll have a coordinated testing days. And just some language in there about school dances in terms of random breathalyzer tests and bags and jackets can be searched, just trying to keep everybody safe, but just want to make sure that everyone knows that beforehand, and also just linking to the MIAA athletic handbook as well. Very briefly revised, just a table of contents, kind of took some, rearranged things, added some parking language, and we're not going to get into that tonight. And so Mass General Law, these are the laws that govern our discipline, 37/8, 37/8 1/2, and 37/8 3/4, and that kind of spills into the next one. So one thing that we did remove was the appeal to the principal on a short-term suspension, and that was actually guidance provided by our attorney. It's an unnecessary step that's not required by law. Everyone is entitled to due process and a hearing, and oftentimes that hearing is with the principal. And so it removed kind of an unnecessary, a little redundant, and sometimes a contentious step when we can just kind of move on after everyone's been heard and decision's been made, as opposed to kind of reliving it a couple days down the road, and that was the recommendation from the attorney. But again, it doesn't mean that due process isn't part of that. So number one, we removed that, and also, number two, part of our budget reductions last year, we did eliminate individuals who had handled in-school suspensions, so we also don't use in-school suspensions, so that was removed. The other change is just to the National Honor Society admission guidelines, and so the previous, the handbook stated previously that suspension from school for any reason will eliminate a candidate from further consideration for at least one calendar year. So we changed it to language that is in line with the National Honor Society, and that's not to suggest that discipline record isn't taken into account, of course it is, but we don't want to create an atmosphere where kids are not entitled to make a mistake and then they're going to be burdened with this punishment for, you know, forever. So that would keep them out of National Honor Society. We like the opportunity to exercise judgment on those, and, you know, kids make mistakes, and we want to create an atmosphere where kids can make a mistake and that's okay. And that's it. Any questions?
Just, I'm interested, I guess, what kind of feedback you've gotten from the religious and cultural holiday policy change.
Yeah, I must say that this year went very smoothly, and I think that is a tribute to the work that you all did, and just making sure that we were communicating appropriately multiple times so everybody understood. There is some gray area there, and so there were some minor things that we had to adjust, but for the most part, things went really, really well. I know that was a lot of really hard work, and so thank you for that effort.
You know, I just want to echo that because I think the conversations we had here really was, this was going to be as well executed as the staff was able to communicate and connect with our families and our kids, and they so successfully did that. To have two minor issues get brought up over the course of the holidays that we've been debating for the last two years, and feel like for the most significant proportion of kids, we served them very well, and I heard stories of teachers reaching out to families, talking with kids. I do think there was the, it's in its infancy, but the beginning of some real getting to know each other better so that we can be flexible, and that message of flexibility with the five days built in so that it was a threshold they had to meet, but I think we're in the right direction. It's been a good start to the school year with that in place, so I'm really, really pleased with the way they handled that approach, because it took that touch to send that message to our community that we value whatever it is that you celebrate, and we want to honor that, just let us know. That's what happened.
And many of us sat here have heard some very contentious conversations, discussions a couple of years ago, so it just speaks to what a good job they did in implementing this, so please pass on our thanks to you, Mike, and also to the staff who had to execute it. They must have really put their heart into it, to make those crowds who felt so differently all happy those things.
I don't want to say we're perfect yet, or not, but we turned a big corner, I think.
That's it. Having good discussions with each other.
Yeah, and I know it took a lot of time, love your better race time to get to the right place, so I appreciate your patience. And a little headedness.
And one last, just briefly, the change in technology use policy was a...
No, just updating to our current policy, just to technologies, we all know changes rapidly. I mean, there was a reference in there to Walkman.
Oh, yeah. I was going to add separately.
No, I don't think the kids sitting here even know what Walkman is.
Hand in...
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Next, we have the votes of the superintendent.
Thank you. So I will not go through every piece of this pretty in-depth document. Hopefully, that can be something people do outside of the meeting, but I do want to highlight some of the major priorities that I'll be working on this year, and like I said, they do highly align with the strategic plan. Just for your reference, I've put the rubric here and how priorities align with the rubric, as well as with the strategic plan, and it does start to show that we're becoming pretty succinct with each other, which is really exciting. So for my student achievement goals, I'll be focused on supporting the work of our intervention through RTI and the special education reviews and how those play out as we step back and reflect. The staff is highly engaged in all of that, as are the administrators, so we're really looking to do a number of things, which is to reorganize where appropriate horizontal and vertical alignment is pretty critical and certainly showing itself as an ongoing need, looking at research-based interventions and services, and then continuing to support the collection of data and its use. And I want to stress, it's not just the collection of data, because we already collect a lot of data, so it's actually collecting purposeful data that tells us information that's helpful to then support kids, so. In terms of, it stopped me, I'm going to do a high level unless you slow me down, so. My second student achievement goal is to focus on fostering a growth mindset through the evaluation system, and this has become a kind of intriguing topic for me because leadership is my thing, I loved it enough to get a doctorate in it, so really studying what we're trying to do with the evaluation system, not just the process of the evaluation system. It's meant to be a supportive process that is growth-oriented, not a gotcha or a punitive process. It's meant to be about improvement, and in a healthy way, not a negative way. So that said, I think that's the work I want to really focus on with the evaluators, who obviously all work with me very closely, through their evaluations, but then through those whom they evaluate as well. I think our work up till now, the evaluator process, has been more process-oriented, which, don't get me wrong, is where every district had to start as the new system came in, because if you can't get the process figured out, the rest can't follow. So our processes are in a pretty good place. That said, we're going to review them and just fine-tune deadlines and things like that with both unions and make sure we're solid on, are there any tweaks? We've got a few on both sides. I think we'd like to look at deadlines to make more beneficial to each side, but really the content of what we're providing teachers for feedback and the integrity of the process. So there are going to be offshoots of that, as you remember hearing from the elementary evaluators last spring, and their challenge in being the sole evaluator in the schools, that needs to get looked at, as well as, I think, honing in on the content of what we're putting into evaluations and the feedback that we're giving, the instructional side, not just the compliance side. So there's been great starts that among the leadership team that I'd like to pick up and continue and really collectively collaborate with them.
It sounds like you have the ability to be, to move laterally in this context, if that's how I'm interpreting what you're saying, like the administrators are going to start to have some way of actually, as you say, making it more meaningful in the work that they're doing, but still hang tightly with what the mandates of what they need to do are.
Right, because within the process, it's meant to be that really individualized, that's the best part of the system, is the individualized feedback teachers get and a really more intimate professional dialogue with us as administrators, and when used for those purposes, it's really powerful tool. When you're stuck in process and compliance mode, you haven't quite actualized the intent. And I think every school system in the state struggles with getting to what the intent really is and not just compliance mode. So that's the goal I have, is to try to help us move from where we are and that we're getting them done, to varying degrees of what we think is efficient or not, or effective or not, and taking it to that other level of, we want to talk teaching and learning with teachers and have that become a professional collaboration.
I have a question. Who are the different participants, and where does the process start, and how much time is spent by your teachers of all different evaluators or...
Sure, so, yeah, just a quick overview of the process. The early part of the school year, every teacher, administrator is doing a self-assessment and rating themselves on the rubric, and then doing their goal-setting work and providing those goals to their evaluator. From here on, we start the observation process of being in classrooms and giving teachers feedback on what we see in classrooms. It's a combination of very short visits or some longer visits. The process is meant to foster both and have those become a bigger picture view so that you can be in and see something really impactful in a 10-minute time period, but you also need to be in for the whole length of the block in order to get a bigger picture view. So those are all outlined in the contract, that's some of what we're going to look at, how many of those and frequency of those. Teachers have to then provide evidence. You'll see, all this sounds familiar to what I provide to all of you, and that's intentional. Teachers have to provide us evidence at the mid-year or end of year, depending whether they're on one-year or two-year plans, as to meeting their goals and each component of the rubric. By the time we get to the late spring, we need to have all the evidence in, all the observations done, and be starting to put together summative or formative evaluations for teachers where we're, you know, giving them feedback on where we see them on the rubric, and again, meant to be very collaborative. Yes, somewhere in there, the ratings of proficiency and all that other happens as well, but for the mass percentage of teachers, it's about the feedback and the qualitative experience that we would like to provide to them. So, there's a lot, there's a lot there. That's not a quick next step, but I'm hoping to at least get us moving in a little bit more of a direction.
It also really shows why one administrator at a school doing that for all of the teachers seems really unrealistic.
Yeah, and that's why your three elementary principals to the Concord folks are sitting here in a public meeting saying to you, I can't do what I instructed.
It makes sense, because you can't do justice to that roster.
We are going to be looking at that model and proposing some ideas to you as to how to reconfigure.
I imagine we've all thought about that since they presented it this spring, because those principals want to be deeply knowledgeable about teachers and classrooms, and at the same time, can't do that in a degree of work, so that's going to be the challenge to crack.
That's right. So we have a few ideas, we're fleshing them out. They will come to you as we get them solid, legit neutral at best. We know that piece has to be in the mix, but we do need to give them some relief or we're not able to get it to another level of effectiveness. District improvement goals, this really focuses on the well-fillingness thread in the strategic plan, so we're focused on mindfulness, the balance of technology, and a balanced approach to the time outside of school. So a lot of what I wanted to focus on this year was to implementation of the Concord Ed Fund grant on mindfulness and where we're going with that, and what that word looks like now that we're trying to put some baseline in of minimum exposure for all kids. like now that we're trying to put some baseline in of minimum exposure for all kids. The technology balance, we're going to have ongoing discussions about what that looks like as we help kids build coping strategies and, you know, attention-based strategies and all of that that in this day and age is just going to be real challenges for them, both in school and beyond. We have hot-off-the-press youth risk behavior survey data that we're just beginning to look at, so we're going to study that. And then supporting the schools with their work on homework and challenge success. I had a high school staff meeting last week and it was in an early piece of the homework discussion. It sounds simple and it's just not. So lots for us to talk on. It's not simple. It's not simple at all. There's many, many layers to that. So that'll, that'll be our work in that goal. The second district improvement goal will be the safety area that I mentioned, collaborating with safety officials and members of the community, updating and reviewing our plans, our practices, our processes, our tools, essentially all of that. Our most recent plan does have a 2010 date on it and that actually never got me on a draft phase. So we, we do have a need to revisit that and update it and solidify it. We're pretty excited about some of the technology options that police and I are exploring, much because of our challenges with cell service. We need another tool that's reliable, so this looks like we might have some options to consider. Obviously, the second resource officer is really exciting. I think that's a game changer in many ways to allow them to become more proactive and less reactive. The police chief's telling me likely by the early part of November, they will finish their selection process and allow us to become the later part of that process and we'll have someone ready to roll. So that's, that's great. And then just talking on the drills and our consistency of the drills, I was at the Alice drill two weeks ago at the high school, and there's always lessons to learn from that and things to think on, and whether it's logistics or bigger picture or all sorts of the what-ifs and processing. The last of the district improvement goals is financially oriented and capital oriented, so working with Jared on the zero-based budget and the rest of the leadership team, which we're actively engaged in right now. Continuing to identify as many cost drivers as we possibly can for areas of reorganization and efficiency. That lens is on. The more the lens is on, the easier it is to find things. Not necessarily easier to implement right away, but the list is growing and growing of how we can do things differently with the high quality of service and do it for less. The other big one that I really felt the need to stay here because you've heard from Justin earlier this fall, and I've been at the middle school a lot, they're, they're a stressed, stressed staff right now, and I just think we want to be sure we're really verbal and supportive of their needs. Obviously, the new building is the biggest need, but there's other work to do too in terms of reconfiguration and just day-to-day challenges in that environment. So it was important to me that that become a really concrete piece of the plan. So I've kind of thrown a lot into this one goal based on facilities and budget, but it all is operational in nature. So hopefully, you know, this MSBA piece, I'll just check off and get invited in next month and it'll be off and running.
Like that plan.
That's it. My professional practice goals, the first one looked into that first strand of the strategic plan, which is really about the innovation and engagement and integration. So the first two things I put here were really to maximize things we already have in place. We have these really unbelievable models that I think we need to talk on how to, how to expand their influence. So the STEAM lab, even when it's still in its little conference room format and by the later part of the fall, when it's in its new environment, it's a tool for professional development. And then the conversation has to be, so what does that mean to us back at the regular classroom level as we see the model for, for that real project-based, authentic, unengaged learning environment? The same is so true, and I needed to say it here because I've been saying it to other places all over. Rivers and Revolutions is the purist clinical model for integration and all of the things we have been talking about in that first objective. We need to figure out how to expose, expose more to it, use it as something that helps inform our practices in other settings, look and listen to the kids in there and what they're telling us about. I just heard a story last week of it's, you know, the words are always save another kid. Okay, so what are we doing? If school had only been like this all along, is the quote from the student, so what is it in there that can translate into a more typical environment? So that's, that's not another, that's another not easy, not easy, it sounds easy and it's not, so, but the goal, the vehicle is there. And then continuing to work with the leadership team on professional development, bringing in, there's so much work out there in terms of the technology use and how that can foster these different instructional styles and what, I think, as a leadership team, we need to develop a vision that we can draft and share out and start to talk with the staff on what, what it is we're even aiming for here. So that's, that's the other big part.
It also demands a different approach by everybody collectively. They really got to pull it off.
Yes. And it trickles all the way to the kids. You'll remember my position prior to this was the curriculum leadership in my prior district, and we actually put a project-based science course in place and thought, this will be great, the kids will love it. And you know what? Juniors and seniors at high school are so used to being taught in another method. It was really stressful for them to not have things just handed to them, but said, here are the, here's the structure and the scaffold, now you go figure it out. And no, just tell us. We must have heard that, I don't know how many times, just tell us, just tell us. So it's, it's a shift for everybody and you got to figure out how we're going to get there.
Yeah.
And then the final piece, which I think is really important, most likely something you'll be most directly connected to, is the structures. We have some just basic structures that are our own structures that can limit how we do this, which is schedules and calendars and what are some of those options as we, you know, look towards next year that allows us a little more flexibility? Again, I don't think I'm talking anything earth-shattering. We've identified a few lower-hanging pieces of fruit that we can probably start with, but then ultimately, for a real integrated environment, those typical blocks and the secondary schedules are a very big challenge. So what are the options down the road? And then I'll pick up the pace here sometime. I get excited.
This is important. This is the curse of...
This is the curse of the work for you.
You don't feel you have to rush through it. This is important.
The next one, you're right. Thank you.
Laura, I have a question.
Sure.
Pardon my voice. The professional development plan.
Yes.
Given that we're likely to be in contract negotiations, is there a way to sort of move some of that forward so that we can have those conversations?
No, that's a good point. I can talk, we can look at that. I think we can probably get some sketch-out pieces without knowing what the actual event will be, but the timeframe and the dialogue. So one of the goals here is to create a professional development plan for next year towards that integration and innovation and some of those pieces we know we need to talk with teachers more about and bringing some, some folks from the outside as well as tapping our internal resources. So I think we could sketch out something certainly.
Thanks.
You're welcome. The next one is based on school culture and our cultural proficiency work, which I said obviously is well underway this year. And I just want to be sure we keep all of the pieces moving with the work that I've identified, which is happening as we speak already, working through the education funds grant and the opportunity it's provided us for cultural competency work. And I do use those interchangeably. We had a whole, your question, we had whole discussions on this. Certain models and the one that Andrew was using this morning actually had cultural competency being a step to cultural proficiency. So, and we've seen them flip to another one. So we're probably going to stick with that one, so we all talk the same language where cultural competency is the, the knowledge base, the proficiency is the actual using of the, usage of the knowledge base. So to me, that was very clarifying and that'll be likely what we continue to talk on. Again, using Andrew's expertise, we're already doing that multiple times even since school opened. We need to set a date in Boston for our forum, so that's continuing to be on the radar. Continuing to monitor the religious holiday accommodation policy, which is, just remind us all, it's not a policy just about the Jewish holidays and the month of September, not at all. That was, I think, one of our areas of measure just because we knew the calendar had shifted, but it's an ongoing piece of work, so. And then continuing our work at hiring, recruiting and maintaining, I think that's probably just as important, candidates, diverse backgrounds, so that we continue to build that identity experience for our kids who need to have someone that looks and feels like them, so. And then lastly, continuing to establish and, oh, sure.
Just to go back to that recruiting and hiring, with HR being somewhat changed in its formation right now, does that put you in a different role in terms of recruitment?
No, I think what, what has happened in the last six months is the highly engaged level of word from the principals and the people that they hire. So you'll remember last March, a number of us went to a diversity job hiring fair and we've actively secured three candidates that we met at that fair. So it's by far at a different level of awareness on their part, so whether it's that level of purpose will go out and seek diverse candidates or just more of a thought process as we see different pools of people, it's just a different level of consciousness and thinking. So it's one I have to be supportive of, obviously, and that I think has mattered as well because obviously we want quality, competent, diverse candidates, right? You have to find just the right balance. And so we've been very fortunate who we hired this year. We're really, really excited.
And I imagine it's a very good thing that principals are closer to that process.
The principals have to be. And even the, we've even had some discussions among the cultural competency committee that met last year because they all have teams of teachers that are part of their hiring process. We very rarely hire a teacher without other teachers being part of the process. And it needs buying in from all levels, that that's part of what we're wanting to consider in the, in the decision-making. So we saw, we saw a lot of different dialogue happening last year in terms of just our, our level of interest in making sure that that was part of the discussion. I mean, that, that basic level of this, we'd like this to be part of the discussion, not necessarily determining an outcome, but something that we value. Yeah, I mean, thank you. And then my last one is related to take, you know, continuing my beginnings of the rapport and relationships and trust building with the staff, parents and students. I think, I think we're in a pretty good place, but that, those are relationships you have to nurture and I'm very well aware of that. But I really want to focus on creating connections with the community members outside of the schools. And I think, again, we've got some seeds to work off of. I had to put down here just because this whole special town meeting process really opened my eyes another level of our need to continue to communicate, collaborate with Carlisle. There's a, there's a gap there in terms of my office and the connection with the town officials and some of their processes. And it's happened in a way where there, there's, the feedback has been correct. Whatever Concord does just gets shared over at Carlisle. And I think special town meeting really opened our eyes that really wanting to engage with them differently and bring them into the earlier parts of the conversation and establish some real rapport and relationships there, so. Also connecting with stakeholders without children in the schools. I have lots of ideas on that, so more to come. Giving people opportunities to participate in the schools even if they don't have students here, so that's another, I, little brainstorm that's happening, you know, in the car ride that's back and forth. And then getting a school committee list off and running so that that becomes a communication tool and vehicle. So.
You're not going to be bored?
I'm not going to be bored, but this is, it's almost really great work. It's, you know, to some of what you said earlier, last year ended up feeling very reactive much of the year, and this is a whole different way of, we've, we've identified common directions and now we're taking steps toward them. And that's just, that's just really professionally satisfying work, so.
Just to your point about how it all ties in, strategic plan and the rubric and everything, it's exciting to see how it all ties in. And one little piece that I didn't stop you to point out, but it's kind of a microcosm of that is where up here you said somewhere, it was under district improvement goals around learning environment. And you have in the same sentence, under outcomes, student and parent surveys regarding technology, homework and stress. And whether that's the same survey or different ones, I just wanted to point out because those are all topics that we've all brought up before, but not necessarily in the same sentence. And you wouldn't expect necessarily to hear them in the same sentence. And yet, they all tie together so intrinsically that I love seeing them together because they do tie. So I just love that we're looking at things as they relate to each other, not just in a vacuum.
It's sort of the same conversation of integrating curriculum, right? It doesn't happen in a vacuum. It's not impacting the same student. So we have to look at it, get a bigger picture. If you think this is exciting, wait for the improvement plans next week with five principals that'll show you plans that sync up. Really starts to show we're all moving forward together while maintaining our own, our own individual pieces of the different schools and within classrooms, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
So as to how to finance all that?
Jared. He loves me because I don't give him big chicken items to a popper. Just while Jared's getting set up, do you mind a little context while you're getting ready?
Sure.
So, yeah, I know you're ready, so. Just a little introduction, this is work you've seen last October, and it really is the important context under which the budget you'll receive in November is constructed. So while there's no numbers here to show you a percentage increase or even us guessing at that, all of the important data that feeds into where those percentages are going to go is factored in here. And I'll just remind you, a year ago when we brought this report to you, special education costs were noted as an increase, contractual obligations were noted as an increase, the enrollment shift was noted as an increase, and it became the baseline for everything that happened after that. So this is, in some ways, this report is almost more important than what we will bring you for line items because this is where the major drivers are. The line items are things we have more control over to some extent. So I just want to thank Jared and Ian's here too, our assistant business manager, for the amazing amount of work this has been. Obviously, the first year go at it for Jared was extraordinary, to say the least. And you'll see, I think, all the background like Ian's going to share with you.
So just a second, this is a group effort. Ian Raines, assistant business manager, he spent about many hours last week, and he's not sick of me. So I'm actually very excited to present this. I learned a lot last couple of weeks, so this past three months. This is a joint report, so you got both reports separately. This is a joint presentation. So without further ado, this is sort of a high-level tutorial here, sort of. A lot of this information we've heard before. So I'm talking a little bit right now about the zero-based budget timeline. We, as you know, we reviewed three to five years of actions. We're looking into everything from legal salaries to FTEs, stipends, overtime, substitutes, contract services, memberships, everything in the lineups. Three hundred fifty-seven, I want to say, at CS, another three forty-six at CC. Special education, getting to, you know, dive deep into every single number that's how many students we have, how many in district, how many out of district, staffing models. In addition, insurance and then all the supplies, materials, et cetera. So here are some timelines as of October 1st. As you know, this process started, you know, way back in July. On August 21st was the first time I really introduced the principals at the retreat. And in September, we started, you know, talking about it, you know, getting their feedback, you know, getting the forms for them, teaching them about zero-based. But beginning on October 1st, the enrollment, October 1 enrollment sent to the principals. Tonight, I'm presenting the reports. On the 18th, we're going to be going to the Concord FinCon meeting and presenting a report to them. On October 24th, we expect a budget questionnaire from Carlisle. On the 29th, we'll be meeting and presenting to the Carlisle FinCon. November 13th is when the superintendent's recommended budget will be presented to you all. On the 27th of November is the public hearing. To be determined in early December is the Carlisle Finance Committee, they'll release their, their guidelines to us. On the 14th, we're expecting our feasibility study costs, so that's really exciting. On the 18th, school committee deadline to adopt a budget for Concord, the warrant articles that are due for January 4th. The 19th, assessments will be sent to the towns. 19th assessments will be sent to the towns. On the 15th, the budget books will be available to the public. On the 23rd, the governor's budget will be, the preliminary numbers will be posted. So our budget will really already be done. So we'll try and match them up and see how we did. Then in late February will be the public hearing, legal deadline for mailing the town meeting warrants to the residents, Carlisle 10 days prior to the public hearing. And then late March and April, we expect a public hearing in Carlisle and then the two town meetings. So here is the high-level 1,000 series function report for FY '17 adopted versus the difference. So it's the adopted versus the actuals will give the difference. And then FY '18, what we did is the FY '18 adopted budget by 1,000 series against the transferred budget, and then you see what the differences are. And this is the high school one. We won't. The next one is the CPS. It's the same thing, but we're doing it a little differently at the CPS level for next year. And I'm going to introduce by location. What you see here is, as you know, in our chart of accounts, we have a number of different locations. By school, then we have an elementary one, we have district-wide one, et cetera. So what we did is we took the FY '17 and FY '18 budgets and actuals and showed you what each location costs. And we wanted to get everyone familiar with how this works because this is how we're going to be presenting our budget book next year for this year. So this is preschool, just a couple of numbers for you here. And then kindergarten. And then the elementary level.
Sorry, Jared, why do you separate kindergarten from elementary?
It's just that from the chart of accounts, it's the locations in our chart of accounts. It's the way it leads. We can always combine it, but for this year, we're going by that location. And then the elementary school, starting with Alcott. And then Thoreau.
And just to fall onto his question, Jared, when you now have a program by school, I would assume each school level, even though we have kindergarten and elementary, when you say Willard, it's still K through five, not F through five?
My apologies. So K is actually separated. So K, even in these ones. So the Will, so Will location is 130 in the chart of accounts, the K location is 30. So what we have is we combine the K locations as three in the kindergarten one, and then each elementary school has their own section in the chart of accounts.
Can you speak to the value of that in terms of your comprehensive understanding of K, K eight?
Yeah. So what I wanted to do is I just wanted to show everyone what the cost of, you know, the elementary as it's by itself, and then the K by itself. I can also separate the K levels, you know, Willard K, Alcott K, et cetera. But I just thought it was so interesting because everyone wanted to see, you know, what it costs to run the Willard minus K, what it costs to run the middle school, what it costs to run the Alcott, et cetera.
So then the effort for all of us looking at these numbers is to know when we're looking at K, that it does not include a prorated part of school leadership. It doesn't include a prorated part of building maintenance attributable to one of those three schools.
Correct. So what the K, just so you know, what the K includes, K includes the tutors, the teachers, and the supplies and materials. There's really only three or four accounts in those, each K location.
So anything that's school-wide, like administrators, goes under elementary?
Yeah, school-wide, you would have the 2,000 level, which is, you know, the principals, the teachers, et cetera, maintenance, utilities, custodial, and then any fixed assets, which is a small number there.
You know, the thing to remember, this is still a big transition you hear. So to take where we had put all the kindergarten costs before and now try to break it out would be a lot more steps than the way we're, he's reporting it tonight. So I think down the road, we don't disagree with you that, is it logical to do it as one and then split the others out? But given how we've been tracking it, we'd have to dive in and break apart line items in a really deep way that maybe isn't necessarily the cost of, you know, especially of our time, right?
Yeah, no, it makes sense.
We're not implying it's not clear. We're just checking.
Just trying to make it clear, not understand.
Yeah, without, I speak in numbers. So without a lot of narrative, it is, now that I'm saying it, is somewhat hard to understand. But there is narrative a little bit in the reports, but in the budget book, there'll be narrative, what is behind each number here? You know, how many FTE teachers, you know, how many lines make up X? And it'll all be spelled out. So I just wanted people to get familiar with how we're going to be organizing, especially the CPS level. So then again, it's a little bit bigger here in the middle school. And then Ripley, so the administrative offices. And then we have a district-wide. And again, what's behind that will be spelled out in the budget book.
And the difference between Ripley and district-wide is that Ripley is personnel, you're saying administrator, or it's people who work here?
Correct.
Or is district-wide might, it might be things that take place here, but it's functions versus people?
Correct. Yeah. So now some other things that we looked into is restructure and reporting changes. So we eliminated 2.5 FTEs, one administrative, two support staff, and for a savings of 257,000. In addition, some reorganizing in central office, the NDR, and through attrition, the director of finance position was another savings of 85,000 combined. Over the summer, as you know, we put out an RFP for a new lawyer, a spooking lawyer for speaking in special education. The hours, the per-hour cost went from 1,100 to 210, which we anticipate that to be significant savings. And another reporting change, the way that DESI does their, they're constantly, as you know, changing the way that they, their chart of accounts and everything. So the IT cost classifications have been revamped by DESI in an attempt to standardize them. So the district anticipates new DESI reporting standards will improve efforts to benchmark IT. Before, it was very hard to say, you know, what was, you know, the 1,000 levels, what was the instructional levels. This way, it gives a pretty clear understanding of how we're going to be reporting IT costs. So another section that we looked at was the special education section at the CPS level. In the winter of 2018, as you know, the district had a comprehensive review of special education that's located on our website. But a few things that we're doing this year, Thoreau is the first of the K through eight schools to move forward with changes to focus on less reliance of tutors to deliver the service. We're expecting a significant savings in FY '18, from FY '18 into FY '19, about $78,000 by doing this model. Other schools are soon to follow. Developing of internal intensive programs, the district is beginning to develop programs within the district in order to reduce the number of students being outside district placements. Thoreau opened the first of these programs, where seven kindergarten and first grade students from all three elementary schools were made in district. And as you know, the average cost of our special education tuition is about $70,000. Savings currently is in avoiding these outside expenses.
So Jared, so at Thoreau, they've started a new model that's less reliant on tutors?
Correct.
And they're, they're the first of that model that you're hoping to implement in the other schools?
So what we also wanted to show you here was how much we're paying in special ed tuitions. If you look in our budget book, you can see a budget line, some actuals against it, that that is not the true, true cost. So what we have here is a breakdown at the CPS level of the general fund contributions of special ed tuitions for FY '17 and FY ' '18, circuit breaker, which is our money that we receive from the state, and have it as a revolving account, how much we spent in FY '17 and FY '18. And then we have a 240 grant, the IDEA, and so this is the total cost of the tuitions that we match our DESI end-of-year reports that we send there.
Can I backtrack a little just on the other specialized changes? So Thoreau definitely has gone to less reliance on tutors and more direct service by certified staff, allowing for a reduction of some tutor positions. The high school reorganization, we took those four positions, tutor reductions, as part of last year's cuts to try to close the gap because they were far enough along, they could identify it last spring. In addition to the program at Thoreau, as we speak, we're able to take that savings that we just talked about and start to talk on other in-house programming for students we are identifying right now as needing more intensive services and looking to add programming for social, emotional needs at both Thoreau and the middle school. So we're building this as we fly a little bit. We're still going to build a comprehensive plan, but as kids' needs are demonstrating themselves to us, instead of our reaction being, let's send them out, the reaction is, can we create something here? Eventually, we won't need to be in the creation mode. We will have a comprehensive set of programs. But it's a whole new way of looking at it. And for two kids who might need to go out because their especially social, emotional behavior, those can be some of our hardest to keep in district without support, to get a call from the middle school that two kids are in need, and for a middle-level teacher, we can keep them both here and already be ahead of what it would have cost.
Don't you have to naturally kind of create as you go because you don't know the kids' needs?
Of course, of course. In some perfect world, you wish you could identify them this, you know, the fall before and plan for them. And that's just not the other flow of kids sometimes. So, you know, I think the Thoreau program that's open right now, we could identify those students. They were in preschool, being serviced very adequately, and we could project those needs forward. Other needs aren't quite that many more.
And you say build them, really is building the structure that, so that the structure's already in place and we fill in with the personnel needs as we need them. Whereas right now, we're kind of building the structure and hiring the personnel at the same time.
Right, right, right. But all of it in that same direction of either savings immediately or because we're reducing added district cost. Eventually, once you have programs, you can talk with people who are out of district and say, come visit what we just built. But it's very hard to engage a family when you haven't built it yet. So I think there's some positives happening too, that we're building a little bit on the fly.
So Jared, just a question, the IDEA grant, where does it come from and what's the trend?
Sure. Well, it's, I believe it's a federal, a federal grant. The 240 grant, the trend is, you're always playing for a little bit of a decrease. So if we get leveled, that's great. As you can see, it went down a little bit. We spent pretty much the entire grant on tuitions or contract services. So the total amount of the grant last year was 506 in FY '17 and 500 in FY '18. So we're down a little bit in FY '18.
So from the Department of Education, who has Department of Education?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's federal.
One other note is, some of this work is contingent on space, am I correct?
We're, we are getting really creative because the mindset is there to find space to make these things work. Correct, of course. And that, to some extent, that's why Thoreau's getting a little more opportunity right now. Alcott is chock full, so some of the space is, is driving some of the decision.
And then we have a comparison at the CCHS. Just a little bit about what we're doing over there. Late last spring, the high school teachers and faculty met extensively and reconfigured services to be focused on providing service to cohorts of students and increasing the direct service provided by special educators rather than to, we're starting that as well. They reduced four to one last year, so that's also a significant savings there. Developing a continuum of services, the district is reviewing its programs to ensure continuity and promote specialized instruction, supporting students towards graduation requirements can have a positive impact physically since services are being provided during traditional high school years. And again, you can see general fund, circuit breaker, and IDEA costs broken up a little bit higher as you can see at the high school. So then we have educational reform and mandates. First one is, as you know, state and federal requirements can evolve and change. Pending legislation, our options are constantly monitored. No new, we expect no new or dramatic initiatives. They don't seem imminent. Prior mandates, however, require ongoing monitoring to ensure implementation and effectiveness. ELL, our English Language Learners, our population continues to grow. Services are mandated and can require additional staff at any time. Teacher evaluation, as you know from the principals, the evaluation process is very rigorous and time-consuming. Currently, the elementary principals are the sole evaluators, giving them extraordinary evaluation caseloads. A plan to remedy this is currently under discussion. And then grants and federal reimbursements, federal grants rates can fluctuate from year to year, quickly depending on decisions made at the federal level. Recent changes in Massachusetts provided us unexpected additional support this year in special education circuit breaker, as well as MECO. The state legislation continues to debate changes to the chapter 70 formula. That will be, we'll be saying that a few years, same with chapter 71, which is transportation, for the audience. So we stay connected, we're aware of the discussions, in addition to lobbying through organizations and local legislators. So enrollment projections, here is the CCHS ones, pretty steady. As you know, enrollment drives the assessments. The CPS level enrollment is on a larger scale, it's actually in the appendices in the back of those books.
Excuse me, Jared, can you say projection? So is this 2020 based on October 1, 2018?
Correct. Yeah. Capital plan. So right now, we are currently developing a five-year capital plan at the CPS. We've identified some things right now. The most pressing thing that we need right now, as you know, is a telephone system. It's outdated. Every time it rains, people can't call in. It's a safety issue and something that is desperate, the district desperately needs right now. At the elementary level, the Alcott, the Thoreau ERUs or energy recovery units require replacement. They are critical components of energy-efficient buildings. And that will be a common theme. When you see our capital plan, everything is going to be about efficiency. How can we become more efficient? How can we save money doing that? Because that's what we're paying for, the utilities on these things that will eventually pay for itself. We also put in, just to put on your radar potentially, in FY '23 and '24 that follow in the five-year plan, boiler replacements at Alcott, VCT flooring replacement at Alcott in FY '23. The middle school is in the conversation in itself. We desperately need replacement, but every year that we don't get it increasingly appears in maintenance. Also, a conversion of the science lab to facilitate the class size configuration, that's also going to happen. And then Ripley replaced this very inefficient heating system that's
So Jared, the telephone, what kind of system is this? Unwired, I suppose?
Right now, the one that we have?
Yeah.
Outdated. So the, I'm not exactly sure what we have. Basically, it's almost obsolete. When things break, it's kind of, if it breaks completely, the parts really are not available.
So it's not the high school system that is now, you know, internet-based and all of that. It's wires, and the wires get wet, and Verizon won't rewire. So until we replace her, it'll challenge.
If I'm correct, it's digital and we don't even have the analog backups we need. So whenever we fix the digital... So whenever we fix the digital, we're going to need to throw some analog that are foolproof when everything else goes down.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, it will require hardware, wiring, whether we go VoIP or the analog public service. So right now, we're in the process of getting quotes, figuring out what exactly we need to present to you in the number. Capital planning at the high school. So we're also developing a five-year plan. But some things that the subcommittee, School Committee Campus Advisory Subcommittee asks us to look into in no particular order of importance, additional parking, bus parking, outdoor learning commons, basketball courts outdoor, tennis courts, paddle tennis courts, pavilion, track, six or eight inch track, indoor ice rink, outdoor skating rink, field house, bathroom amenities building at the stadium, solar panels, water play, agriculture, farm animals, raised gardens, greenhouse, and passive holding space.
So Jared, that, that's just a list of things that came out of that report of ideas.
Just something.
Five of those are the real positives.
Correct.
We're going to whittle the slide down to those five.
Now you'd be confused about me. I have to walk myself.
The water play, so.
So this goes back eighteen months in time, and what we're really doing right now is waiting for the feasibility work.
Yeah, so really, it's about those items that are in the feasibility study. So we'll probably rework the slide a little just so it focuses on those. And it, it's the track and the outdoors learning spaces and then whether or not we can build a field house. If that's even doable, never mind if it's what we want to do. And parking and paving. Those of you who weren't on that committee, this is some really good ideas.
Yeah.
Yeah?
We don't want to delay.
Sorry.
So in addition to the zero base, part of the zero base process is looking into transportation, how can we do it better? But some things that you need to know, we currently have twenty-two buses at CPS level to a wheelchair. At the high school, we have twenty buses, we have one wheelchair. We are developing a ten-year replacement cycle. Absolutely must be that. And we're also looking into a comprehensive transportation review from, from an outside set eyes. Collective bargaining at the CPS level. Here are the bargaining units that are either at the, that are either both CCHS or CPS. We plan on opening discussions with the teachers shortly. And then collective bargaining, some repeaters here at the CCHS level. We are currently in negotiations starting on the twenty-third with the building service officers.
Jared, could you just go back to the CPS slide and talk a little on the impact? It's really this year's budget, but the equity piece and what that means, going to FY twenty?
Yeah. So the expiry contract that this, for the CPS teachers, they get an extra two steps at the end of this contract. So going into, into FY twenty, everyone that's not on the top level is being bumped two steps, not including any holder. So that is something that we need to identify and figure out the cost of what that, that is, what is the significant cost? And it's contractual, so there's nothing that's contractual.
I would say of our topics here tonight, that is the most standout cost driver going into FY twenty is making sure we've adjusted for that.
So that's why it's so important to do, as done in the past on salaries, that to really identify every single teacher and employee, that every teacher, what step they're on and what impact it has on us for next year so we can get them, you know, sent to the festival. So OPEP, or Other Post-Employment Benefits. For people who don't, that don't know what OPEP is, it refers to the benefits other than pensions that state or local government employees receive as part for her, his or her retirement benefits. In the, in the, in the book that we passed out is a, is a schedule from FY seventeen to FY thirty-eight on the OPEP. If we were to, right now, we plan on funding the ARC for FY twenty, which is seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight. Again, we have the schedule in the book all the way up to FY thirty-eight. The accrued balance as of June twentieth, two thousand and eighteen is three million, seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-one. Some things that's really important to, to point out, the, the district anticipates FY eighteen plan design changes, most notably the addition of high deductible health savings plans that will positively impact the June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen valuation and funding schedule. Similarly, the FY nineteen FTE reduction will, will contribute to a positive impact as well in that valuation. However, significantly, however, underfunding FY seventeen and FY nineteen OPEP contributions, that will have a negative impact going forward. And we expect the district to get the completion of its June thirtieth valuation by January thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. So we'll be able to present that to you all later.
I'm going to just interrupt for a minute. I'll just remind you, we funded in FY nineteen, the line item is six hundred thousand for OPEP, so to get to the seven eighty-five, we'd be adding back the one eighty-five. So there's a cost driver on the regional side, yeah.
And as you know, this only affects right now the, the high school. So the town will have to take care of the CPS level. And then our debt service. So as you can see, it's going down. The high school construction borrowings will, will apply downward pressure to debt service assessments through the next decade. This table right here presents the anticipated debt service amounts through, through the final high school construction debt service payment in FY thirty-eight. And then in the book is a full chart and table of what our payments are through that time. Health insurance, again, at the CCHS level. FY seventeen costs for active employees as well as retirees. FY eighteen costs for both as well, and then our estimated costs right now for FY nineteen and FY twenty. We anticipate a close to a double-digit increase for, for the active employees going on for FY twenty, which is pretty standard right now. So it's significant. That's the other big cost driver that we have. Also, we wanted to show some external funding at the CPS level. Here, the funding source, whether it's grants or the MECO grant or specialized circuit breaker, that's what we receive in FY eighteen, what we're projecting at the moment for FY nineteen and a very early projection for FY twenty.
When you make those projections, Jared, of nineteen, are they just, are they a little more, a little less percentage wise?
Right, they're, they're pretty solid. I don't expect FY nineteen to change, actually. But as you know, the MECO just went up a little bit, unanticipated. Its circuit breaker went up quite a bit as well.
So that's already reflected?
Yeah. So we looked, we went a little bit beyond just the, the, the grants and the revolving accounts, and we spelled out pretty much every other revolving account we have at the CPS level. A beginning balance, any revenues that we received in FY eighteen, any expenditures, and the ending balance as of six thirty, two thousand and eighteen. So we did the same thing for the high school, again, circuit breaker. As you know, being the regional, we're an entity and we have to project all of our revenues. So the revenue here is obviously quite a bit higher, not including the assessments, but we include chapter seventy as well as chapter seventy-one, which is the transportation reimbursement, any charter school reimbursement. We also get interest earnings and then other miscellaneous revenues. And then we also have FY twenty projected, very early projection right there. And as you can see, at this time, we level funded the chapter seventeen, the chapter seventy, seventy one. So we haven't given any indication that it's going to go off a little down, so that's what we're planning on for the end of the year.
So Jared, we make payments for the charter school students, right? And so what's the net difference there?
We have, we get a reimbursement as well as the, I don't have it up, you know, the charter, we have, we have a line in the budget that is tuitions to charter schools that we base it off the cherry sheets. Cherry sheets are really last year's, so they're really, they fluctuate throughout the year. Off the top of my head.
It's about a hundred thousand.
Yeah, that's, we get four hundred dollars. So we're, we're obviously paying quite a bit more than we receive. And again, some revolving gift and other balances at the high school. As you can see at the middle of the page, is the OPEP trust. So you'll also notice in the back of the book is, we put a glossary because a lot of people don't know what these mean. So we tried to get, we tried to spell out, you know, what's in these, what's in these accounts, what, what the gift accounts and the revolving accounts can be used for, what the grants can be used for, some other basic definitions. And I hope, you know, through time that we continue to expand that glossary. It's just a good thing to have. In the appendices, we also put in the NAST DESI charter accounts, which probably changed since my presentation started, because it's all. As well as the enrollment reports that we run, as well as MSX. And I welcome any more questions. So again, it's a lot of information. The budget book will have even more detail. It will explain all the changes that we're, that we're making. That's how we're recording the information to you all. And this is sort of just a preview to, to let you know how we're doing.
Can I just say that it is a lot of information, but in this format, it's so helpful because it, you've really laid it out clearly and you've, you've gotten out the drivers and the issues that we all need to be aware of as we build the budget, and it's in a format that is so much more easily digestible than we've had before. So clearly a lot of work done in this. Thank you for doing it.
Good effort.
Really helping.
So just to summarize, the three biggest drivers are the contractual insurance?
Contractual increase at CPS.
Yeah.
Contractual at CPS because of the double step. OPEP, and if you're trying to get back on the ARC, which is how, we will budget it that way so you can see what it looks like if we put the ARC back in. And then really the health insurance at the high school, the double-digit increase that we always budget. What are you putting in, ten percent? You know, we've been putting in a placeholder. And obviously, we absorb that within the high school budget in a way that skews percentage increase of it, so. So those are the three. I mean, it is a very different starting point than a year ago, as I reminded you of those other things that were moving as we came into October last fall. I think there's a lot of positive here that things have stabilized and now the work we're doing is diving in and really realigning and making sure we can account for all the different places things are being charged to. That's probably the other big driver that you're going to see when you look at FY, we're going to keep saying this over and over, as you look at FY eighteen actuals and FY nineteen, all the moving pieces to do that is still a lot of shift. And we started to show that with the transfers last year, but now that we're in another budget cycle with Jared's expertise in the charter accounts, it's another layer deep. So that doesn't mean it's a cost driver, it's just going to show numbers in different places than they've been in the past. So the bottom line is, once we put our budgets together, what, where we land here, I mean, there's a lot of positives, I think, to show that we're really doing the same or more with less. I can't tell you what that number will be a month ahead of time, but there's a lot of promise that we're going to come in at a very different starting point than we did last year. So how that plays out, I won't predict yet, but it, it's certainly feeling like we've got a lot more, a lot more proactive places to operate from.
I could just say too, as you said before, we have, we've had a lot of buying from everybody, from the principals, to the teachers. Today, the high school, yesterday, the high school budgets were due to Mr. Strulo. He's meeting with them this week, and then he's getting the, his, his final numbers that he's going to defend, so Laurie and I, he's getting me those next week. We're meeting with the elementary principals on the twenty-ninth of October. So my budget will be done, presented to Laurie on twenty-ninth, the principals will defend it. On November second, the high, the middle school and the high school, we're going to be defending their numbers as well. So we're, we're coming up on the finish line soon, at least on this first, this first part. And it's been, it's been a true group effort. Everyone, from department chairs to secretaries, everybody has really helped out, so.
Jared, can I ask the whole one, for anybody who's interested, if there, what you gave us and what's linked on the agenda, our two fifty-page reports?
Correct.
So there is significant detail and information there about lineups and, and script and that. Could we link this to today's agenda?
This?
Yeah.
Sure?
We can say it in another.
Absolutely.
Probably my last comment is, we're doing a lot of long-range, my mother's saying, long, long-range planning so that line items don't have a lot of volatility to them. I mean, you never know what could happen, but we're, everything we're approaching with a sustainable mindset of, let's not just do a one-year fix, but what do we think it will be going forward? And as you could hear from the strategic plan, we don't have any, we have a lot already. So the goal right now is to look within and see what our resources already provide us to grow forward on all the initiatives and objectives we've identified, so there's no major programmatic needs coming forward because we need to create some such thing. It's just a matter of reutilizing what's already in place. So I, I think we feel really good about the direction it's going and the level of detail we're in. He, he is in the weeds, I gotta tell you. He is way down at the dollars. He is telling me today that we have somebody working fifteen minutes of overtime a day. So I, I'm like, oh, okay. Okay, we'll talk about that.
Is that when you kick my?
Yeah, right, yeah. We won't go on his overtime right now. So it just, it's a whole, much, much tight, a very tight approach, and we know where every penny is, and we're reallocating it as we speak to do better with what we have, so.
It strikes me hearing that, that means you've got to send a goodly number of messages back to the staff that there's a purpose in this, that it's not that you and Jared are tending to micro and spectate their work, but rather that's feeding back into a process that does ensure the stability that we're all trying to achieve.
And I think in some way, we've met with the department leader, department heads at both middle and high school, the leaders of the middle school and the heads at the high school, and they're really empowered to be part of this and say, this is how you can put in for what you think your department will need. And we are getting little bits of different programmatic pieces, but we're also getting a lot of just validation that they have what they need, that the voice they're getting is actually really, really impactful. And in the same point, you're right, when we start to say no to things, there's a bigger purpose here and a bigger picture view of the world, which I think honestly hadn't been what was communicated in the past, so they can see they're all part of something, you know, beyond their own, their own corner. And that, their mindset of buying into that has been really phenomenal, so, really.
The level of transparency, excuse me. The level of transparency, excuse me.
It's a credit to you and Jared for sending those messages that get heard about this process.
Yeah, thank you.
The level of transparency has been beneficial and reassuring, up and down the scale. For people in buildings, for townspeople, for us, it's refreshing. Thank you.
Ready to move on to the next item, which is the user agreement or PEG?
Yes, so, let me try to tell you where we are here. So the version you have in the packet that's posted is draft number three. This draft was edited by Concord Town officials based on the feedback provided at our last meeting about making sure Carlisle's access is maintained and preserved and a few other pieces of input. So let me just highlight what those changes are. I've got too many versions. And give you a little bit of an update. Remember we talked to on an MOA with Carlisle? So that is under, under process. There's been a draft provided, this is hot off what I got from information this afternoon. Concord Town manager has provided a draft to Carlisle and they're awaiting feedback. So there's actively a process in place, they just haven't finalized what that document is. So my understanding of that MOA is going to address some of the concerns you've had about access to the studio. So the changes that are actually in the document that you are looking at tonight are minimal but important. So if you look in the first, first paragraph, you'll see that there's more fleshed out there. And I think, you know, little tweaks will still be made as to peg PEG being written out or abbreviate, you know, we're going to clean that up so it's consistently with the periods or then not with the periods. In addition to that, there's a sentence in section three. You'll read that last sentence. The town will share the studio space and equipment pursuant to a mutually agreed-upon MOA signed by the chief executive offices of Concord and Carlisle, attached as exhibit B, which is, will be the MOA once it's agreed upon. There's a little more fleshed out in the paragraph on the employees and the communication they will have with the schools adhering to our employee conduct and safety processes. So that's going to, just to shade more depth to it. And I think other than that, there were a couple of word smith pieces that weren't significant. Probably the piece I still see needing a little discussion is the right to relocate. It came up here, it's come up again at the town. I think they got a little, as they reread it, a little nervous, like if you wanted to relocate all that equipment in one space, so is that a realistic discussion? I think that's one of the last pieces, but if you see other things here that you want to talk about, certainly look at those as well.
And when you say you're still concerned about it, are you concerned about the way that it's worded now or the requests?
Not me. The town has expressed just the question as to the reality of that relocation happening, given how permanently...
And I did notice it's different from the last time we read it, which was much more open, we could have relocated it anywhere.
Yes, so that was there.
It said, is it a similar space or within the high school? So it...
I think the question becomes one of, as landlords, you typically don't want to give the right away to relocate. And then there's a practical piece of it, but it is a TV studio that's not easily relocated. So what, what do you want in the document?
So if we, if 15 years from now, we have another 300 kids in school and we need every ounce, every square inch of space, and we needed, we needed to turn the space to studios and into a classroom or something, would our ability to do that be to, to pull out of the agreement? There's some kind of this, it's, I think, agreement may be terminated by the district by notice of the town, should the town default on obligations. There's really nothing here that gives us that right.
I tend to agree with you.
It's problematic. I understand, I mean, this is, this is a, and I don't anticipate we would be in a situation we couldn't work out, but this is a legal document.
Yeah, I think what we're trying to do is protect the, the prerogatives we have to, if you will, protect educational delivery up there, whatever that means in the future, which we can't fully foresee. On the other hand, which makes this conversation difficult perhaps, is we expect that resource to be used more fully educationally in the future too. What should give the town comfort is, any reasonable interpretation of this would say that it's on the district to fund the relocation, which we would not be keen on doing. If the district may relocate quote unquote, we're, we're not going to be keen on absorbing that expense, and I think the town knows that full well. So how do we protect our, our rights over use of that building so, so nothing could ever, ever restrict the district's flexibility, at the same time protect these other considerations?
I think it's important to bring these up now so that we have at least had the conversations about, you know, what happens and that of that. I mean, this is not, you know, this is not an unrealistic event. You know, there are a couple of developments coming into town right now, but if they're successful in getting permits, could increase the number of kids by 100 in the system easily.
Yeah, and square inches will matter if that happens.
So I'm happy to try to work on some language, whether the collaboration of town hall and district council, see what we might propose to you. I hear what you're hoping for, it's just how to capture it.
No wording, yeah.
In good news, I think, you know, the transition seems to have gone very smoothly. They're fully operational and functional. All is going really well and we're glad for that, so.
And we're being recorded tonight?
We don't think we're recorded tonight.
Don't worry, we don't want you to know.
Okay, so let me work on that piece.
Okay, great, okay. Thank you.
So next up are the CCRSC goals and the CSC goals for '18, '19.
So I'm just going to pass on Mary's behalf. She sends some feedback on the regional goals and I printed them, and I don't like to change what's posted after the weekend, so I'm going to just hand those out to you and their, her edits are in red, so consider them.
Neat.
Yes. So I, I just, so there's two things linked, Concord and Carlisle goals. So just to go through to be sure, I'm assuming everyone looked at some Concord goals, I input all the edits and things I got, so it hopefully reflects that with having much of what you saw last time in terms of budget development and budget development process, superintendent support and evaluations, strategic plan, community engagement, cultural competency are all similar to what we looked at in the regional. So it should, I think it should be the same and what, the last one we looked at was the middle school goal, which we know in that, in my degree, what that was. And then what you're looking at is Mary's version of my, the final version that was linked of draft of what we talked about. So I had the opportunity to go through Mary's because I got this before you guys did, but I think that would be important to look at it in particular, where the key, the biggest sort of please look through and be sure I got it right kind of come. She did the campus oversight evaluation goal, which is the H on the last page, so that's why it's all in red. Regional agreements, I kept pretty simple, review it, get educated on it, develop an understanding in order to then maybe make, then consider next steps. Oh, and the one before, sorry, the four campus oversights, of page two, the one we talked a lot about was environmental sustainability. And again, the quality self, kept pretty simple, creative policy describing a system-wide environmental sustainability objective, which includes working with Laurie and a said committee, or advisory committee to her, advisory board to, I think I articulated that how it should be superintendent advisory board, as you sort of read that, what that group would look like, but it would include at least one of us as we sort of look at that. And what we want, want to set up is objectives for the following year, or as to the goal to sort of complete that, so much of the safety group ready. So those are the key places. Again, I thought Mary's contributions were good and clarifying.
I agree, I think, I think key stakeholders captures everybody, rather than, I don't know that we need...
That's necessary, okay.
Concord and Carlisle, it's not a big deal.
That's not big one, yeah.
It is.
So we've discussed most of these goals at previous meetings, that the new one is H, the campus oversight evaluation.
Well, I would say, sorry, just, and then we get around, but the new ones really are G and H and I. And this new success linked to previous assessment. G is the environmental, H is the campus oversight, and I is the visual. Just checking for your eyes on it to say, capture what it comes up.
Yeah, on, on, on F and G, I, I don't personally see any, anything that I'd want to change, any.
No, I assume that the timeline is, is correct during your edits.
Right, she, she changed the name of the policy there. I'm assuming that's to make it accurate.
Accurate, yes.
Given that she does policies, trust her on that one, yes.
Usually what she does is just make it more accurate, whatever we've done, yeah.
The only thing that I could change is in regional agreements.
Yeah.
Rather than use the word get, maybe use become.
What's that?
That's a very good one. It just seems like something to tell the right kids.
All right, so, okay, so. I'm not offended, it's fine, we'll, I mean, what did you say, become?
Become. That is a plural one?
No.
How much get the agreement?
Well, we could, there are three different agreements, actually.
Yes.
Yes, right. There are amendments to the agreements, I guess that's why the agreements, is that, there's agreements, an agreement and then two follow. Subsequent amendments to the agreement.
Oh, right.
So maybe it says become...
How much get the agreement?
Subsequent.
Subsequent amendment.
And then that would be accurate, yeah. All right.
We can make things more accurate too, just like Mary.
Good ask. All right.
So we could discuss H now, or maybe we look at it over the next week or two, and then when Mary's back, kind of finalize the, that section and...
I'm happy looking at it.
Yeah, oh, you are, okay, that's good.
Okay, we can. We didn't actually have a vote on the agenda partly because Mary wasn't here to talk about the feedback she provided, I think that's your decision what to do with that.
I think it's good.
I think it all looks good. We need to vote until next time.
Yeah. Yeah, we all put it on for discussion again, then we'll just put a vote on it.
Just put a vote, yeah, yeah, yeah. I think it looks great.
Or we could vote while we have it at this point.
We won't get bored this year either.
No?
Okay.
Thank you for doing that, Jared.
Yeah.
Collecting everybody's...
Okay, we're done with that item?
Yes, it's linked to the CPS, yes. This is a campaign. Yeah, we, we won't just take on the next one, it's just, I mean, they're just, the practices and protocols were, as we edit it together, so if anyone has anything, you can bring it up, but otherwise, I think it reflects just the comments people made.
We'll hold on it two weeks from now.
I had, I had a couple of things that I came up with in reading it again. Can I, can I climb notes to the, the version?
No, I know, I know.
Let's see, in practices, oh, this was very, actually, okay, so...
Which one?
In practices, under practices.
Yeah.
This is something we talked about before, and maybe we decided just not to include it, but public comments, we say we do at the beginning, sometimes the chair decides to allow public comment at a relevant time if it's high interest. Do we want to note that or do we not want to note that? Just wanted to bring it up so they were all...
I think it's good to add that.
Yeah.
It's the thing about, if somebody gets to take over running a meeting, so that before, that would be very, very helpful.
Right. And we don't do it all the time, but there are certainly times, because there's a real, you know, high-interest discussion that we're having a lot of debate on, that will take public comments at the time, so I don't want that, just wanted to bring that up.
So add along a sentence, are you meeting members of the public, so public comments will occur at the start of each regular meeting?
No, it could be...
At the discretion of the chair.
At the discretion of the chairs.
Public comments.
Can be allowed for high...
Before, before we draft it, let's consider why that happens. It happens because it's germane to a particular item at a time. So public comments without too many boundaries can occur at the beginning of the meeting because of citizen requests, but as a rule, this would be agenda-relevant if it's within, during the meeting. Do we think we know that as long as we're...
Or do we start with this?
Because it's not public comment in the same sense.
Oh, in other words...
So comments relative to the current...
Agenda item.
Agenda item.
Well, but they are from the public, right.
Agreed.
So chairs may at times, chairs may at times choose to accept comments related to a specific discussion.
Agenda item.
Agenda item.
So it's agenda now?
Yeah.
That's a good point.
Chairs may choose to accept comments relative to...
I even said may at times, so that it's clear that this is not...
Shouldn't be...
It's not a...
Might use at chair's discretion.
At chair's discretion, yeah. I mean, we don't want it to seem like every agenda item then has public comments. Because we beat all night.
At chair's discretion.
Public comments.
Public comments may be... Accepted, what is it?
Maybe made.
Heard. Well, no, because the chair, if the chair's discretion, the chair will accept, the chair will approve, the chair will welcome, the chair will do something.
Welcome.
Welcome.
You did comments.
Entertaining.
Welcome. On topics. On agenda topics. At the chair's, let me make sure I got it right again, at the chair's discretion, comments are related to the poetry. Public comments will be welcomed on specific agenda items as discussed.
I didn't say may be welcomed.
Maybe.
I didn't want to open this up to all of a sudden, you know. We do have to keep our meetings moving along. It's more to highlight that we do this once in a while.
Right. So at chair's discretion, public comments may be welcomed on specific agenda items.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Oh, the next.
She has more.
I have more. One more in practices, it won't be that complicated, only that we referenced the school committee archive email, and I don't know that we're using that all the time now, is that something we're using, should we be using it all the time, if not, should it be in here?
So in the past.
Yes, yeah, they're not numbered, they're about fifth from the bottom. It says, the school committee chair will reply correspondence sent to their respective school committee.
And I think it was included, like you were.
With CC, all school committee members, and a CC archive of all the reports.
Yeah, so I think you just have like an archive place. And say automatically archived.
Right, because we archived all of our emails. Because for a while, though, for a while, there was an SC archive email specifically that you were copying.
So everything is automatically archived, I don't think you need that extra stuff.
Okay, so you don't need to CC the SC archive.
So when we send something to the Concord Carlisle school committee email, you adjust to that, so that, for instance, Christine gets it, and Dan doesn't.
We were a little.
We don't have to worry about that.
Yes, no, you don't have to worry about that, and we automatically archive it. I've all taken it.
So I think you can delete and the SC archive, because you don't have to CC the SC archive, it automatically, that's okay.
Where is that, I'm sorry?
It's the fifth from the bottom, I'm sorry, they're not numbered.
The top section.
Maybe that's my next comment, maybe we should number these, so we can remember.
That would be very helpful.
Or letter them.
Number seven, it sounds like one's more important than the other, but lettering them.
Okay, let's letter them, let's put something so we could identify them, by other than fifth from the bottom.
I can number them, why, why?
How about pictures of farm animals?
Farm animals, yes. They didn't make it on the campus.
All emojis.
All right, we're gonna number them.
Take a SC archive reference.
Any others?
I had one more, I have one thought on protocols.
Protocol. Number.
Hold on, I need to find my notes again, these have numbers, number 11.
Okay.
A number 11, oh, a number 11, we acknowledge the school committee meetings are business meetings that are held in a public setting, I only wondered if we should add something like, at the same time, we value public opinion engagement in our activities, and we encourage participation via public comments, email, public forums, or direct contact with school committee members. Just the sense that these are business meetings of public setting, but given that these are, all the protocol things were kind of how we think, I thought it would be nice to also highlight that we do encourage and value public engagement, and if you can't engage with us directly throughout our school committee meeting, here's how you can, via public comments, email, public forums, other ways.
It's gonna run onto second page, I'm gonna change the format.
Oh, no.
I need the margins to be plus one.
That's right, bigger margin, that's my, smaller margins.
Smaller one.
Maybe you guys have ideas, I'll take care of it. All right, I guess mine.
I wrote that down, do you want me to just send you that?
Send me that.
I'll send you that, verbiage that I.
Can we hear it one more time, I think it's good.
Sure, and, or feel free to make any edits, we'll do it now. At the same time, we value public opinion and engagement in our activities, and we encourage participation via public comments, email, public forums, or direct contact with school committee members. Does that make sense?
At the same time, do we also?
Do we also?
I like the change, the latter and narrow, two-way communication.
Right, we're just trying to like. We don't want it to come off as, we don't want to hear from you, only they, right, they're appropriately here. Okay, you're up?
No, that's good, nice solution, thank you.
Okay, good. Okay?
It's gonna be pristine next time.
Done with this?
Done, okay.
Onto the campus feasibility study.
So last Wednesday, we met with, we had our startup meeting with a member of Gail Associates, Brian Schlegel, Dr. Hunter, Ian, and myself, as well as a member of Gail's team. We discussed feasibility study timelines, making sure that everything that we wanted will be done, will be done in a timely fashion, we stressed that we needed the cost by the 14th of December, and we asked him questions as what he needs from us to get going. So we also have our second meeting, we're gonna be hosting, so we have our campus advisory meeting next Tuesday, the 16th, at 1:00 p.m. At 11:00 a.m., if you're gonna be coming early, and we invited many members of the town, the employees of the town, to come and meet with Gail to discuss relevance, I'm sorry, the goal of the meeting is to provide guidance to Gail Associates as they begin work on the feasibility study. The meeting is also a great opportunity to convey concerns regarding the study directly to the project engineers, and to coordinate the sharing of relevant documentation between departments and Gail. So that will be one of his, their five meetings, I believe they have, it's either five or 10, I'm sorry, I think it's five. So that's where we are.
You referred to cost estimates, will you characterize those as tentative or potential priority items?
Those are the cost estimates that we have in the feasibility study, so we can have further discussion to meet the deadline, to get it, if we want to have it in the springtime line.
But again, broken down by potential priority items, because we don't have formal priority items.
Correct, we can't do.
And would, will there be one or two Gail associate representatives at the campus oversight subcommittee meeting?
Yes, I believe there'll at least be two, the architect is coming, as well as the project coordinator.
I have a different mic.
Oh, close it.
Oh, sorry.
Next item is enrollments.
So as we normally do, we're freeing you the October 1st enrollments. I think probably of greatest note, as you saw in the presentation, the high school enrollment in the Concord Carlisle split is remaining very static, which is good news, I think, to everyone for this coming budget year. Of other, and the other thing that will jump out at you, I think, and there's watching, is the discrepant numbers between the elementary schools. Alcott this year is at 470, Thoreau at 454, and Willard, because of a low kindergarten enrollment this year, has gone from being at 433, the lowest, down to 414, the lowest. So that gap is something I'm feeling the need to watch, that's, that's a lot of kids different between the three schools, especially between Alcott and Willard. I'm not making any recommendations, or even hinting at a recommendation right now, I will just remind you that all of the Boston kids attend Alcott right now, as do all of the kids who live in Muse Complex, phased them out of all the other buildings, the last person in Thoreau, he started the year there and then moved. So I think there's, we're gonna have to try to project what's coming next year, but that's significant enough of a number that we need to keep talking about.
Well, that shift was in enrollment during the shift to Alcott.
Of course it was. So. Yeah, no, that's the challenge with enrollments, predicting.
A few years ago, we were sitting here, and Willard was at 500, it was Boston.
Wasn't, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was at 500 one year, definitely 502 or something.
I mean.
So it's incredible, the shifts that can happen in a few years.
The truth is, when you've got, I'll use neighborhood elementary schools, for lack of a better term, you always have to just keep an eye on them, right? Because things change, and the plan you made five years ago may not hold, so.
Neighborhood's turnover, and that's.
Yeah.
So for Willard, is 500 sort of the maximum capacity, or they are.
It was tight then, it was tight, every inch was used.
Willard's at 414, so that's a concern.
So that's a room here.
Alcott's the one to watch and force it.
So they've basically flipped from that time, so now Alcott's up at its, pushing its maximum.
Yeah. So nothing to act on tonight, but valuable for sure.
Yeah.
And then the other numbers, I guess while I roll, the other numbers we're watching in the reconfiguration to place seventh and eighth grade at Sandborne, we are watching those, the current sixth and seventh grade numbers carefully, so more to come on that.
And the fifth, if we, if we total up the fifth graders here, what's that guess?
234.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on the next page, actually, don't want to do that.
Thank you. I was about to get there.
234.
234.
So.
So we're smaller than the eighth grade class that's leaving.
Yes.
The middle school right now, by 20s, so that's.
Really, the driving force behind the plan at Sandborne is to get a schedule built and see how the space allocates that, so we're actively, as we've worked to rectify a long process to get this year's schedule settled in, we're gonna immediately start on that date, right, next year, 1920.
Yeah.
So on to action items, and we have several policies to approve. Any, do you want to have any discussion questions about them? So I'll take the motion.
I would, I would move for both committees to approve school committee policies, file IJNDD, IMB, JA, JB, JC, JCE, JCA, and JEB.
All those in favor for Concord?
Aye.
Aye.
All those in favor for the regional school?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, vote to approve the CSC representative source, or the CTA negotiating one. We don't have a link, but I have, is there a motion to?
Right, to, I would move to vote to.
Need to nominate.
Right, to be first. I would like to nominate, I'm not nominating me, right, I would like to nominate Joanna Poitton and Wally Johnston to be our CTA negotiating team.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
You're welcome.
Now, I would like the motion to approve the CCHS sample.
So moved for both?
For, no, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the trips, there's only one trip?
There's only one trip, well, we realized, the high school realized this afternoon that the trip to Francie approved in the spring, so we do not duplicate that.
Got it.
I'd like a motion that the Concord Carlisle School Committee ought to approve the January 6th, 2019, whether service trip to American Meteorological Society, Concord, in Phoenix, Arizona, with the condition that we're satisfied with supply of MIAA, MIIA from all participants.
Second.
Any discussion? I will pass down, any discussion?
All I'll say is, both, this is, we've been doing it for years, it's such an awesome trip, these kids who like, you know, to do this stuff, it's a blip trip.
They're one of the few Lycos that's awesome.
Yeah, it's mostly college, and it's just, it's really cool, I, oh yeah, we've seen photos of them coming back from their present days, one of my kids got to do it, and it's just, it's really great, somehow they still do, it's awesome.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a second. Second. For both?
All those in favor for Concord?
Aye.
For the region?
Aye.
Thank you.